Provide. All right. Good evening. It's just a little past seven. We'll call the meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors, June 16, 2020. To order, we'll start with the by delete.
America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
All right, we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson. Chairman Bartlett. Supervisor Hedlund.
Here.
Supervisor Score. Supervisor Gary Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Zahn. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Here. Supervisor Zahn is a lean remote.
And I'm here.
Supervisor Mays.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers.
Here.
Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Here.
Supervisor Cromry. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor McCullough.
Here.
Supervisor Story. Supervisor Vandermuilen. Supervisor Nihah. Supervisor Morehouse.
Here.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Here.
Supervisor Tripp. Supervisor Proctow. Supervisor Jensen. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Bauer.
Here.
Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Hardtime.
Thank you. We have a forum. Approval minutes.
I assume.
Supervisor Steen moves Supervisor. Lino seconds. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of moving the minutes as printed, say aye. Opposed? Or should care. Petition or presentation of petitions, memorials and other communications. Retirement of county employee that Pavolski, 25 years for your county jail. And Sue Moore, 39 years of child support. I don't think either one of them are here. But wow, what a wealth of experience we're losing in those two people. Wish them well. In the future. Public comments. Is there anyone here from the public? Or Chris, did you have anybody?
I did not receive any public comments.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to appointments. You should all have an appointment sheet at your desk or sent to you. For the Menominee Library Board. Reappoint Darren Wicke. Transportation Coordinating Committee. Reappoint Chris Corpora. And to also to the Transportation Coordinating Committee. Appoint to succeed Denise Larson, Bobby Craig. Yeah, I need, excuse me, I need a motion for Supervisor Steen moves Supervisor Morehouse seconds. All in favor, say aye. Oh, scary. To the Nutrition Advisory Council. Appoint to fill the unexpired term of Jane Weber, Suzanne Gaines. And also to the Nutrition Advisory Council. Appoint to fill the unexpired term of Jan Pauska, Sherry Homestead. Those do not need word of approval. Moving on, report of the county manager, starting with COVID-19, please.
Good evening. First of all, just technically Supervisor Bauer, I believe we're viewing your screen. Okay, it's gone now. Not not quite sure what button we hit there. Apologize for that. Um, as you know, we've, I've been giving you updates on the COVID-19 pandemic for over a year now. And wanted to do this at least one more time. The rate of infections have substantially dropped, but they have not gone away. The pandemic is not over yet. As of the latest report. We've had a total of 4,696 positives across the length of the pandemic so far. So nearly 7,000 positives among Dunn County residents. And we've had 33 deaths. Even one is a tragedy. Thirty-three is bad number. There are 10, however, that are active. Compare that to back in December and January when we had many, many people active with COVID. We still have one Dunn County resident who is hospitalized. So it's important to realize that it is still a potentially very serious, even deadly disease. There are 409 probables out there as far as vaccinations are concerned. Where nearly 50% of Wisconsinites have begun the vaccination series, 49%. We only have 36%, 36.2% of Dunn County residents who have completed their vaccine series. I don't know if anybody listening, anybody attending here today knows anyone who is not vaccinated. There are some who perhaps are not vaccinated for good reasons, underlying health conditions. The majority of people really should be. It is a safe vaccine. I think everybody in attendance here has been vaccinated. I don't see any masks being worn. And to the best of my knowledge, I've not heard of any local report of any adverse effects from vaccination. So please encourage everyone that you know, anyone that you know, who has not been vaccinated to get it. It's it's safe and it's effective. And we even perhaps have some attending today could tell you just how serious a disease this is from their own experience. So. Be happy to entertain any questions on COVID-19.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Kinnear.
I'm wondering plans to do outreach vaccination clinics as other counties have done, go up in the northern part of the county, go to different areas, whether it's churches or schools or bars or anything else is because I, from experience, I know a lot of people that if there was something that stopped, that they would not ever end up going down there. So is there anything in the works?
I will ask help, Public Health Director Katie Gallagher, who's here to come up to the podium and address the question.
Good evening Supervisor Kinnear. That's a great question. So we are working on pop-up clinics where we meet people where they're at. Last Thursday, we did a pop-up clinic at Thursday's table. We had two people take us up on vaccinations. We were ready to vaccinate 50. We are working with Our Saviors Lutheran to do a pop-up here shortly, and we have another church in the Banji area where we can do a pop-up, working with West Cap and some of their clients. So they can come in specifically to a specific clinic, meet them where they're at, take it out of a medical clinic. And make it easy, free, and hopefully painless.
Thank you. That's great from Menominee, but how about Ridgeland and Boyceville, Colfax, all the rural areas?
Sure.
Have you got any going there?
So we don't have any with specific pop-up in outlying areas. We have been working with our schools to meet needs in schools, and so we have MOUs. Memorandums of understanding, thank you, to move that forward, but we want to get a little closer to the school year and of course, meet the the community where it's at. If we don't have an open door, we're not going to invite ourselves in.
Thank you. I think you should be inviting yourselves in into the places because we have such a low rate. I'd like to see us higher than Wisconsin. So, thank you.
Supervisor Steen, you have a question?
Yes, KT, do you have any figures on the people older than 65 percentage-wise who are vaccinated?
Sure. So throughout the state, people over 65 are better vaccinated than the general public. So in Wisconsin, it's about 80% of all people, 65 are better. Here in Dunn County, we do not meet that threshold. We're lower. I believe it's 72%, but I don't know that I've looked at that with intention the last couple of days.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Stole. Supervisor Story.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. KT, I guess what I'm wondering is since our percentages are so low and since things are really very opened up, have you seen any upticks in any specific areas because of graduation parties or because of any of the activities that have been going on that would lead us to believe that we should still be concerned and be wearing our masks more readily outward, out everywhere, even though we're vaccinated?
Sure. So as a vaccinated individual, I do believe we can follow the CDC guidance Supervisor Story. We have not seen pockets of increased infection rates. This is but it's something I'm very grateful for, but there does appear to be a seasonality to infection. And we are back to the time of year where people are gathering outdoors. They are engaging in different type of activities. We don't have the same kind of close contact or ventilation where we we saw more clusters of illnesses with gatherings and that kind of thing. That's, that's not to say that if you have underlying health issues or if you are live with somebody who has underlying health issues and you feel more comfortable wearing a mask, that's okay. But as a vaccinated individual, I do believe you can follow the CDC guidance and not wear a mask in public.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Keeter.
Have you seen any of the, in Dunn County, I think it's the Delta variant coming out of India?
Sure. So we have sent several samples off for genomic sequencing. We have not received a variant of concern back. They don't let us know what else they find, but if it's one of the variants of concern, you would be notified. In Wisconsin, the State Health Department made an update to their website. Let us know that there have been 26 Delta variants found in Wisconsin dating back to April. Not here in Dunn County, though.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I wanted to bring you up to date where we are at with the American Recovery Plan Act funds or ARPA. As you know, every, you know, unit of local government receives a certain amount of monies from the federal government to help with recovery following the COVID pandemic. Dunn County was earmarked for $8.8 million. We have already received $4.4 million. And I believe we're due to receive the second half next year. There are many ideas that have been proposed for the use of these funds. And many good ideas that have been proposed. There are some general guidelines, however, that we want to keep in mind. The first, probably, and most important is that these are a one-time funding source. So one thing that we want to give very careful consideration is not applying it to create a program or a service that requires ongoing expenses for staff or anything else. That means that it would be best applied to one-off kinds of projects. The other element that's got us in waiting is we are being advised by the various financial advisors not to rush to use this money because the guidelines for what it may be used for are not clear yet and are changing. Up front, the, it was pointed out that the money may be used for water sanitary sewer systems, which we don't have in Dunn County, operated, owned and operated, or broadband, rural broadband, which we have a very keen interest in. But we also have other funding opportunities with broadband as well. We may find, when all is said and done, that that is the highest and best use of these funds and would certainly be prepared to do so. But because the guidance as to what these funds may be eligible has not been completed, we have been advised to wait. We are not required to spend these funds until the end of 2024. One of the things that we are keeping an eye on is can we use them for other capital improvement needs here in Dunn County? Board supervisors will recall earlier this year, we did a capital improvement plan and identified $42 million worth of necessary capital improvements over the next five years. If some of these funds are available to be applied, it could defer or replace perhaps some of the borrowing that we also agreed we would do if we need to the tune of $3 million a year. Perhaps it could defer that be used for that purposes. There's another area where it's been talked about, and that's revenue replacement. There's fairly complicated formulas for calculating what revenues may have been lost as a consequence of the of the pandemic. It's not as dire as you may not think, may think. It's not as obvious as you may think. For instance, you may think, well, surely sales tax suffered during COVID-19. No, actually, they did not. We, the indications are we did pretty well with sales tax in 2020. So that revenue replacement may not be the best use or may not account for much of these funds. In any event, we have parked the money in an interest-bearing account. So it's not just sitting useless and idle, and we're watching very carefully, it seems like daily. I received notifications from the state, from the Wisconsin Counties Association, from the National Association of Counties, NACO, offering white papers and seminars on the latest that's available, latest information and advice on the use of ARPA funds. I've even had one town here reach out to me and say, if we can't find a use for our ARPA money, can we give it to the county? Just as they did last year with COVID relief funds. It's not clear if that's going to be an option or not. If it is, I think we'd certainly be in a position to say yes, because I think we can identify uses for it, but it's not known. So I want to encourage everybody to think about the potential uses, give a careful consideration to take kind of the macro view, look at our overall needs, not rush to a decision, but make it considered and informed decision about this. It ultimately will be the decision of this county board. Be happy to try to field any questions you may have.
Supervisor Steen.
Yeah, what percent interest are we getting on that money?
I'm going to defer to our CFO, Keith Stray, who is smiling because he knows the answer right off the top of his head.
We gotta pay them.
No, we're not having to pay anybody, but we did work with the treasurer, the county treasurer to place it in the state of Wisconsin local government investment pool. The earnings, I don't know the current range, but I'll bet you very close to zero. The low, low interest rate right now, even on millions of dollars, it's next to nothing. So, but having said that, that is one of the multiple requirements with these funds. You have to track every time you're coming in and going out. So placing it in a dedicated fund, even the interest earnings, we have to account for on how we use them. So in all seriousness, that's also part of why we're taking a methodical approach. Because in the end, these are grants that will have all the reporting and all the other joys that come along and all the streets.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Seeing none.
Thank you. You've got the report of purchase orders over $40,000. There's only two. They're both associated with transit. The vendor Phoenix Cars for the Phoenix Emission Shuttle Buses, that's for our share, the 20% down payment on two electric buses and two charging stations. And then Pi Management is a normal staffing that we normally handle once a month, but due to an oversight, we're doing two months and putting two months together, kicked it over 40,000. So you get to hear about Pi Management. That's our staffing, our transit bus drivers. So that's, that normally you won't see that one on our list.
Supervisor Steen.
Have we got the buses yet? And if we haven't, when are we going to get them, you know?
I'm going to turn to John Sworsky, our Highway Commissioner. You know that answer?
Yes, we just.
You want to lean into your mic?
We just submitted our, our PO forum to our portion to get them filled. So once they receive the PO and gets that process started, they're going to be built here in the next couple of months.
Any other questions? Not? Thank you. Moving on to nine, reports of departments. We'll start with the highway operations. We have a report. We have Commissioner Sworsky here. He's going to come, come up the front and he has anything to detail or point out.
Evening, everybody. I highlighted in my report, you ended up with two versions, a PowerPoint version, which was a little bit more friendly to read, and then the actual Word document. Any questions on last year's operations?
Supervisor Rogers.
So was the cost of carrying for the roads down because of weather or because of the pre-trip?
A combination of both. Most of it was Mother Nature, just a little bit friendlier. We were a little over a half million dollars better off than what our five-year averages were, one, two, something. And we were just over 700,000 on actual cost for last year. Part of it is, we did receive a brand-new brine maker from the state that went online at the beginning of January. 6,000 gallons per hour is our capacity on that. So we should never, ever run out of brine. We have three tanker trucks set up. And now our new state trucks have, we went from 150 gallons to about 425 gallons. So liquid is the, is the new future. So reduce salt amounts in the environment, cost. It's, it's what we're going to go to.
Any other questions for the commissioner? Supervisor Steen.
Yeah, John, I, we were going to do from Highway 12 up to that old church on B, right, this year, but that's been put off. Is that correct?
No, that, that's actually 2023. You're talking the MLS.
Well, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna put in lights and four, four-lane it all the way up to the old church.
Both, both sections of B from the interstate south to 1229, that one's going to get done in '23. And the, the other one now got moved to '23 also. So the MLS portion, which went from the I-94 ramps to 1,000 feet north or 1,500 feet north of the railroad.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Moving on to public health. We have KT Gallagher, Public Health Director here with us. You have some things you want to point out to us?
Sure. So again, you guys have my report. I wanted to point out a couple of quick things. One, as you guys all know, the Public Health Department was absolutely consumed with its work with COVID-19. And so that is reflected in the report that you have in front of you. Our other services did diminish. As a result, we had a different need for tax levy. So if you look at the percentages of our budget that was covered by tax levy, that was about 28%. There was a reduction of about $140,000 and a significant increase in grant funding. Many of our nurses didn't do the normal things that they would normally do, like suicide prevention. They were giving shots and doing contact tracing. So that's really important to point out, and hopefully we will write that as we get back to a more normal scope of operations. I also wanted to, in addition to the money of it all, point out some of the other disease communicable disease follow-up that we did, most notably hospitals, hospitalizations associated with influenza. So in a typical year, Dunn County will have over 200 people hospitalized with PCR positive for influenza. We had 24. So the hard work of mitigating infection transmission for COVID-19 resulted in the mitigation of other infectious diseases. It didn't work so well for chlamydia and gonorrhea, but the airborne ones, it definitely had an impact. Any questions?
Any questions Supervisor Hedlund?
Yeah, thank you. KT, you earlier mentioned you know, we're talking outline clinics. We found a place in Boyceville that was I guess adequate and open to you coming. Would it be helpful to have a signup program there prior to you coming so that?
So we work with a lot of community partners. If we have folks that, that we know we have walk-in business, we will go. Absolutely. It's easier for us. We don't want to waste vaccine, but we also don't want to waste an opportunity to vaccinate somebody who wants to be vaccinated. So if there is a community partner up in Boyceville that wants to open their doors to us, we will go.
Any other questions Supervisor Rogers?
So are you having to throw all the vaccines away that you don't use?
No. So a couple of things have happened. So we have not had to discard a significant amount of vaccine. Obviously, we, each, each formulation is different in the amount of vaccine. So we currently have Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so we're able to get six doses out of a Pfizer vial and five out of a J&amp;J vial. So if we have three folks that we know are going to get vaccinated, then we may have to discard what the remaining doses. And so that did happen with our pop-up clinic at Thursday's table. But by and large, we are not throwing away a lot of vaccine. The another, the other thing that has happened is that there has been an an extension of the expiration date for J&amp;J. So whereas we would have had to discard a significant amount of J&amp;J, I think over 100 doses, we have an additional four weeks, I believe, to use those. And so we have up until August, I believe. Don't quote me on that. For extended use. Again, it's still safe and effective. The data is catching up and they're making those changes in real time.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes, KT, I just saw this. Maybe you already have thought of it. Coordinating the vaccinations with blood drives. Have you thought of that?
I have not.
Well, in Colfax, I can't speak for other communities, but they do it at the Viking Bowl. And that would be an ideal spot, I would think, just a suggestion.
If the Viking Bowl wants us, we will go.
Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you. I don't see any. Thank you, KT.
Moving on to extension. Catherine Emanuel, the Regional Director, is participating in this meeting via Zoom. You've all got the written report. Catherine, you have anything you would like to add, or are there any questions for Catherine?
Thank you so much. For those of you who I haven't met, my name is Catherine, and I serve as the Director, as Chair Bartlett shared, of Chippewa, Dunn, and Eau Claire Extension Offices. And I do apologize for not being there in person. I'm applying a lesson that we learned, which is if you're sick, don't go spreading your germs around. And I have a temperature as of today. So I do apologize. It is important to be there in person and you're welcome for not getting you sick. So with that, I just want to highlight a few things. First of all, just so incredibly proud of our team, the Dunn team that we have in our Area 16, which does work across county lines and serves Dunn as well. We had a, a meeting this year with our County Board Supervisors of our Oversight Committees, and our theme was working to We had a, a meeting this year with our county board supervisors of our oversight committees and our theme was working together while we are apart. And I think that really sums it up because extension is very much about collaboration, coalition, coalition building, and really reaching out to those pockets of the community that are often underserved. It's an important thing to do and we have a federal requirement to do that with our extension programming. As I look through the report, I, I just want to lift up a few things to just let you know that your Dunn County team really is a leader amongst leaders in this state. And I'm going to just point out a few examples. The first one is from agriculture. Our ag educator, Katie Wantock, has shared that over the years, she has helped to organize a farm lenders conference since two thousand and eleven and over fourteen hundred people have participated over those years. And each year, because of that conference that she helps to lead, over two thousand farm clientele are served. And that's many, many folks here in Dunn County. Katie is really focused on working with succession planning and just making sure that the next generation is ready for whatever that need may be. The next highlight that I'll share is our horticulture educator, Margaret Murphy. She has shared between three counties. And she does a lot of community-based education, answering a lot of horticulture questions that come up. In your packet, you'll see that there's best practices for community gardens during COVID nineteen. What Margaret didn't tell you is that she's the one who took the lead of making this document first in extension. The state of Wisconsin learned about that and this is a document that the state of Wisconsin then adopted. And that came from right here in your backyard. Next is also another class that really was fostered under the leadership of Sandy Tarter, who teaches Foodwise. It's a federal nutrition education program. And actually, the county doesn't put any direct levy dollars on salaries or benefits for these Foodwise educators. However, we do receive office space and some office materials in exchange for education in the community. One of the classes that's been taught over the years is Strong Bodies and that's been an in-class class to have, you know, it's kind of like Silver Sneakers. And of course, we couldn't meet, so they had to quickly transition it to virtual. Well, what happened was Sandy took the leadership from here in Dunn County statewide. They converted this class to the first-ever virtual format. And what was really cool is that when people were logging on, they would say what county they're from and they could see it on their Zoom name. And people who hadn't seen each other for months were seeing their classmates back on Zoom and just really nice example of bringing that together. And the last piece I'll highlight is around four H. So, again, vulnerable population, working with youth and just trying to keep everybody safe. We simply didn't have as many in-person meetings in twenty twenty and we certainly are meeting in person now. However, we had a concept called four H in a box, which is basically getting all the supplies together and doing online programming together. And the educators in our three counties really helped to lead the effort across the state that is now being recognized on the national level. So, again, I hope that you are proud of the educators that we have here, serving in partnership with Dunn County. They are certainly leaders amongst leaders and really, I'm so appreciative of their innovative ways they found to respond to the pandemic and continue the educational efforts here in Dunn County. With that, I will gladly take any comments or questions.
Any questions? I don't see any. So, thank you, Catherine. Moving on to ten A, Judiciary and Law Committee, ordinance prohibiting use and possession of drug paraphernalia. This is the second reading. Is there any speaking to this? At this point? We have the sheriff with us. If there's any questions, are there any questions before we vote? Yes, we did a real good job last, last month of explaining it then. All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to ten A two, ordinance prohibiting minor sexting. This also is a second reading. This also is for the sheriff, so we have him here. Is there any speaking to this or any questions? I see none. Between Supervisor Tripp and the sheriffs, they did a real good job last month. So, all in favor of this ordinance, say aye. Opposed? Passes. Moving on to ten B, from the executive committee, resolution approving FY twenty twenty-one budget adjustments for CJCC Human Services and Public Health. I need a motion for this one. Supervisor Morehouse moves, Supervisor McCullough seconds, speaking to this budget adjustment. Our CFO, Mr. Stride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a combined resolution as indicated for three different departments that have received grants. And this is establishing budgetary authority, would increase the budget, adopted budget by one hundred and forty-two thousand six dollars, but they have no impact on current year's tax levy. It is recommended by the executive committee.
There any questions? I see none. This is probably a roll call vote. So we'll have a clerk take the roll, take the roll of the.
Supervisor Zahnz.
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson.
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer.
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork. Right. Supervisor Calabrese.
Yes.
Supervisor Hartung. Supervisor Headland.
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Kennedy, you're on mute.
Give us a thumbs up if you vote for it. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Kneer.
Yes.
Supervisor Cromry.
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter.
Yes.
Supervisor Lino.
Yes.
Supervisor Maves.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse.
Yes.
Supervisor Nihaf.
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Score.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes.
Supervisor Story.
Yes.
Supervisor Tripp.
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel.
Yeah.
Chairman Bartlett.
Yes. Resolution passes. Thank you. Moving on to the next one, resolution approving FY twenty-one budget adjustment for a one-time payment for the N D C and public health employees. Are there any questions on this? This we've been over before. Any questions for our chief financial officer? If not, we'll have the clerk call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Wow, getting way ahead of myself. Supervisor Johnson moves Supervisor Headland seconds. All right. Now, any discussion? All right.
Supervisor Anderson.
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bjork.
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Calabrese.
Yes.
Supervisor Hartung, absent. Supervisor Headland.
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes.
Supervisor Kneer.
Yes.
Supervisor Cromry.
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter.
Yes.
Supervisor Lino.
Yes.
Supervisor Maves.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse.
Yes.
Supervisor Nihaf.
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Score.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes.
Supervisor Story.
Yes.
Supervisor Tripp.
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel.
Yes.
Supervisor Zahnz.
Yes.
Super, Chairman Bartlett.
Yes. Resolution passes. Thank you. Moving on to ten B three. Resolution authorizing the borrowing of not-to-succeed six point eight five zero million dollars providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes therefore. I need a motion for this. Supervisor McCullough moves Supervisor Anderson seconds. Speaking to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. This is in follow-up to the financing and refinancing plan that was presented to the executive committee last month and direction given to staff to proceed forward. And this is the first step, a formal step in that process. What was identified then was the twenty twenty-one budget included borrowing up to one point three four seven million in new funds to take care of capital projects for this year. Also, our municipal advisor and staff reviewed our current outstanding debt and noted two possibilities for refinancing for savings. The first is two thousand thirteen A refunding notes as well as, and that comes with approximate savings of two hundred and eighty-six thousand as well as our small loan of two hundred, from twenty eighteen with a savings of approximately forty-two thousand. So, it is in the county's best interest to go ahead and do that. So, this is the first step in that process. It authorizes us to proceed forward with the formal steps that takes, including the ratings call and working with our municipal biologist.
Any questions? Supervisor Rogers?
How much of this is new debt? Just the one?
The one point three four seven million.
Could you repeat that question?
My question was, how much of this borrowing is new debt to work?
Yes, the new debt portion is just under one point four million. So, that was the one point three four seven.
Supervisor Lino first, then Supervisor Steen.
Is this part of that three billion dollars a year program that we were going to be talking about?
No, this is, this is what was adopted in this year's budget. What was in the CIA. That's what was adopted in this year's budget for twenty twenty-one, the one point three million. The three billion a year that you're talking about is in the capital improvement plan for the next five years.
Okay. So this is separate from that?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes. So, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're giving you the go-ahead to go, go ahead. But if for some reason the interest rates should adversely change, you, you're not tied in going ahead with anyway, are you?
Correct. The county board is not unhooked to sell, absolutely. But this does give us the authorization to work with the different parties we have to. If, at the day of sale, in a month from now approximately, if things go crazy or things don't play out as projected, then no, we don't have to sell. We can pull off, mute, delay or defer. For those that have been on the board, we actually did that, I think, a year or two ago when we were trying to refinance and then rates weren't where we expected them to be and we held off.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, this requires a three-quarters majority to pass, so we'll, we'll do a roll call vote to make sure that we have that. So, clerk to call.
Supervisor Bauer.
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Yes.
Supervisor Calabrese.
Yes.
Supervisor Hartung. Supervisor Headland.
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen.
Yeah.
Supervisor Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes.
Supervisor Kneer.
Yes.
Supervisor Cromry. Supervisor Keeter.
Yes.
Supervisor Lino.
Yes.
Supervisor Maves.
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough.
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse.
Yes.
Supervisor Nihaf.
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Score.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes.
Supervisor Story.
Yes.
Supervisor Tripp.
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel.
Yes.
Supervisor Zahnz.
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson.
Yes.
Chairman Bartlett.
Yes. Resolution passes. Thank you. Moving on to ten B four, resolution authorizing acceptance and expenditure of federal and state COVID nineteen reimbursement funds. Need a motion for this. Supervisor Morehouse moves Supervisor Headland seconds. Speaking to this, Mr. Stride.
Thank you. If you recall, last year, early in the COVID nineteen phases, and we talked about the flow of money, grant money from the federal and state government and things like that, and worked with Corporation Council on how best we could manage that. Because what happens sometimes, these monies are just additional allocations from the state or new grant dollars that show up, sometimes with very limited timeframes to utilize them. So, things that were identified as COVID nineteen-related, specifically, the county board did pass a resolution last year, very identical to this, to say it's okay to go ahead and utilize those funds, accept them and use them for COVID nineteen purposes only. And then there would be a screw-up before the end of the fiscal year from a budget adjustment standpoint. That process worked really well and it kept things going. And we are seeing very similar things happening this year. And I actually reported to the executive committee, I could foresee this for the next couple of years because you have billions and billions, trillions of dollars that have been allocated by the federal government to states and directly to counties and indirectly to states. And as places don't utilize them, in some cases, they turn on and reobligate it to people that still have outstanding funds. We're seeing that. The Department of Human Services and Health Department have had money show up or additional allocation show up relatively unannounced. Same with the nursing home. We've had provided relief funds show up. Nice challenge to have in some respect, but sometimes it also puts an administrative burden on departments because if they're told they, they can use it, but they've got ninety days to do it. Our process somewhere sometimes can take up to sixty days to get through a formal budget adjustment process. So this was the recommendation from both Corporation Council and myself last year to give us that ability to react and use these funds, maximize the funding that we receive. So we're suggesting we do that again this year, specific again, only to COVID nineteen. And we keep that track and we'll report out with budget adjustments that by the end of the year, the county board will still be acting on those. But this is to allow departments to be able to utilize those funds expeditiously, especially when the timing really it's in the county's best interest. So, this was recommended by the executive committee for your approval.
Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you. Moving on to ten C, from the Health and Human Services Board, a resolution approving a Dunn County housing study. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor McCullough seconds, speaking to the resident supervisor Morehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we all recognize that the, there is a crisis in housing in Dunn County for our, there's a significant proportion of our residents who are homeless or who require transitional housing as they exit the jail or exit treatment. And there are very limited resources for the homeless or the people living in poverty. Stepping Stones has been trying to fill that need this year and has been hard-pressed to do so. Most of the resources that they have, and particularly since there hasn't. Most of the resources that they have, in particular since there hasn't been an ability to congregate housing for the homeless, most people have been put up in hotels at, as you might suspect, fairly significant cost. Housing is also an issue in the workforce and for working people. It's been difficult for employers to bring new employees in, because housing is either unavailable or unaffordable. A few years ago, the Health Department, in undertaking its prescribed community needs assessment, surveyed the public, and among the five issues that were identified as significant problems, housing was one, with over 50% of the respondents indicating that safe and affordable housing simply wasn't available to citizens in the county. In response, the Health Department has convened action teams working on the five priority issues identified in the needs assessment. One of those has been a housing action team. Supervisor Quinn and I and others have been involved in the housing action team. The, that team of 30 or so different people who come in and out from various perspectives on the housing issue, elected to take on a housing study as its first priority. They, everyone on the housing action team recognizes that we have an issue in housing or a whole series of issues in housing, but nobody really understands why. What are the specific issues? What causes the issues? What can we do about it? The housing action team has received a grant from the Community Foundation of Dunn County in the amount of $10,000 to support moving ahead with a housing study. So a number of us here on the county board have been talking about, about moving forward with this. The Department of Human Services has a significant interest in housing, and the Department of Human Services would be essentially the point department on such a study. The West Central Regional Planning Commission has done several of these studies. We have met with them several times and asked that a study in Dunn County be very specifically targeted to what are the policy issues that could be addressed in such a study. So this resolution gives us the ability to move forward on a housing study and to authorize the West Central Wisconsin to move forward. The good news of this is that the county study is essentially paid for by the grant from the Community Foundation of Dunn County. As other municipalities elect, the city of Menominee and other municipalities elect to come on board, there will be additional costs for the extra work, the extra studies that are particular to municipalities. But West Central Wisconsin Regional Plan will be applying for community development block grant funds to support those costs up to two-thirds of the entire cost of the, of the study. So this, this allows us to move forward. I think the good thing is that it's relatively inexpensive. I think the other good thing is that there probably will be significant funding sources available to look at some of the issues related to housing. And this study will give us the data that we need to move forward in applying for grant funds or federal funds or other resources.
Any questions? Others want to add to the resolution? Supervisor Calabrese.
Is there an idea of how long, thank you, Mr. Chairman, an idea of how long the study would take?
Mr. Chairman.
The question was how long would the study take?
Yes, Supervisor Calabrese, about six months, but it depends on the number of other municipalities that decide to join in, which could, you know, potentially extend the timeframe. But ASAP.
Any other questions? All right. I know it's a little different than it was before, but we're sharing our mics, so let's try to lean forward and speak into the mics. Just a reminder. If no other questions, we will, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes, thank you. Moving on to 10B from the Planning, Resource and Development Committee. 10B1 Ordinance Creating Chapter 10 of the County Code of Ordinances Regarding Minor Management. And this is the first reading. I need a motion. Supervisor Quinn moves Supervisor Kinnear seconds. Speaking to the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a first reading, but I would, I would just have time to, and I'd like to ask our county conservationist Chase Cummings to come up and do a brief explanation, maybe answer any questions that the board might have.
Welcome, Chase.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to meet and interview somebody for the first time. This evening is, before you, is a ordinance, proposed ordinance. It is a repeal and replace ordinance, the repeal of the existing minor management ordinance. It was adopted in the year 2000, April 2000. It's being replaced with a ordinance that is the new Chapter 10 Environment, Environmental Protection and Management, and specifically the sub-chapter of Agriculture Performance Standards and Minor Storage Management Ordinance. This ordinance is, has significant changes compared to what the previous minor management ordinance was. In particular, it discusses, points out specific agriculture performance standards within it that all farms or that the community must comply with. This is not inconsistent with state law or state administrative code. This ordinance is not allowed to be more restrictive than that of the state. So what this ordinance does do is provide tools and implementation mechanisms for us locally to implement what is already existing agriculture performance standard prohibition, also known as NR 151. Those performance standards and prohibitions consist of making sure that all cropland is farmed to meeting Calhoun soil loss levels, having implementation of a nutrient management plan for nutrients applied to cropland and pasture land, looking at other setbacks for tillage, phosphorus management, and then a series of minor management prohibitions, such as no un-confinement nerve stacks within a water quality management area, making sure minor storage structures are over top, things like that. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions we have regarding it. One last thing I would point out, one of the challenges that we across the state and county space with regarding the implementation of these performance standards is we rely on the Department of Natural Resources for their enforcement, and that can be quite challenging at times, it can be quite time-consuming. By adoption of this, these codes or this ordinance, it gives us the tools to expedite, if needed, any potential enforcement that is necessary. That's not our intention with this ordinance, but it is a tool as a result of this ordinance that will allow for more efficient time management and basically accountability when it comes to these agricultural performance standards. So with that.
Any questions for Chase? See none? Oh, Supervisor Lino.
So this will determine the level of spreading that's happening from a large slurry containment in the surrounding areas around adjoining farms or contracted lands for spreading. So what this, what this, thank you for the question, Supervisor Lino. What this ordinance does is again, is create a consistency with what the state of Wisconsin already has from administrative code. What that says is that all nutrients applied to cropland or pasture land, unless mechanically applied or through grazing, those nutrients must be applied according to a nutrient management plan. That means a particular conservation practice standard. That is in existence today through administrative code. Caution is required for farms, cropland that is not existing. So cropland that would have came into, into effect post-October of 2000, we would be required to offer caution for cropland prior to that. This ordinance also has a requirement, because it is not more restrictive than the state, we must offer caution for that as well. But in general, for your, to your point and to your question, nutrient management for liquid manure, for example, does require currently a nutrient management plan. This ordinance is consistent with that.
So, so the question is, is that you did mention that there is some teeth in this if the management plan isn't being followed. Can you give an example of what the teeth that you as an agency would have to go to the farmer and say, hey, you're doing this wrong. It's not part of the plan that you agreed to.
Sure, sure. So obviously each situation is going to be unique, but the enforcement mechanism through that is proposed by this ordinance is through citation authority. And that citation, a size, a written citation based on a set value for, for the penalty as on a per-day basis where each separate day would be a separate violation. So depending on the severity of the, of the, of the instance, there could be a citation.
Sure. And then that would be served by the county sheriff?
Technically, that would be, could be served by our department through the approval of citation.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't see any. You did a good job explaining it. Thank you. We will not vote on this this month, because it's first reading, or we'll have the second reading. Thank you. Moving on to 10B2. It's an ordinance approving rezoning in the town of Tainer. Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor McCullough seconds. Speaking to this, Supervisor Quinn.
Yes, this is a fairly straightforward rezon request. It's a parcel in the town of Tainer that is currently zoned ag, but is adjacent to a primarily residential area. The owner would like to rezone to residential and create a couple of lots on the property, which is consistent with land use in the area. The town board has approved this, and the committee recommends approval also.
Any questions? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Next meeting is the end of July. It's not the same as last Wednesday, July 28. Are there any other, oh, that I want to mention for DMs? I noticed a few, you brought them up, and just get back in the habit of bringing them in every month, please, so Andrew doesn't get too far behind with his office.
I don't mind.
Supervisor Steen, you have an announcement?
Well, I was just going to have you remind everybody that the executive meetings are 21st.
Executive Committee, the committee is also a week later, yes. Anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you for this.
No.